Okay, so welcome everyone to the October 12, 2021 E-TAC meeting. My name is Nancy Sanz de la Vila, and I'm the Chair of the Environmental and Transportation Advisory Commission. We've already started the meeting, right, Reporting Secretary? I would like to call this special E-TAC meeting of October 12, 2021 to order at 4:02 PM. With my Vice Chair, I'd like to leave this in the study room.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America. And soon we call it the righteous stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reporting Secretary, please call roll.
Carl Benninger.
Here.
Hi, I'm Jermaine.
Present.
Janelle McLaughlin. Present.
Dorian Romero. Yeah.
Yes, and Sanz de la Vila. Here. Gary Wood, I requested an excused absence, and I have not heard from Tony and Barra. So there is one request for an excuse to absence. Do we approve that? We can go ahead and vote. All of them can say calendar item with Gary Wood as the excuse to absence, and we can vote on that one item. So we need a motion. Can I get a motion in a second? Or can I actually do the first part, right? I move to approve. Item one. Item one, two, and three. One, two, and three. Can I have a second?
I second that.
And before speaking, we can just say for the record, who's speaking? Going forward, we can vote on the items one, two, and three. And we do have a form, by the way. So if you can, I'm going to go ahead and vote on, ask for a vote on each, from each Commissioner, for items one, two, and three. Nancy Sanz de la Vila. Brian Jermaine.
Yes.
Carl Benninger.
Yes.
Janelle McLaughlin. Yes. Dorian Romero. Yes. And the motion passes. We can move on to the ways the public can access this virtual meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed via the city of Santa Ana portal. If anyone would like to provide a public comment, they may do so in person. Or on the city of Santa Ana portal, www.santana.gov-public-portal. The opportunity to speak is going to follow this comment, and if you wish to speak, please select the hand if I want to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called as one by the name you enter. If any members of the public are present, and we do have one member of the public that is present for this in-person meeting that would like to speak. She has completed a speaker card. She has handed it to me, and I have handed it to the Chair. You will have three minutes to speak, and we will alert you when your time is up. Moving on to public comments on agenda items or non-agenda items. You're going to ask me if there's anyone that wishes to speak, and I'll say yes.
Okay, is there anybody that wishes to be approved?
Yes. You can go ahead. You can stand and identify yourself.
My name is Judy O'Callaghan. I live at 1601 Brampton Avenue in Santa Ana. Over two years, I've been trying to get someone in the city of Santa Ana to answer my request to have a tree in front of my home removed for safety reasons. But looking at the paperwork here, it probably said that the recommended action is to deny a request. So what is my recourse? The tree is a hazard to me physically. It is a nuisance. I don't feel I should be responsible for watering it. I'm going to rip out all the sprinklers and stop watering it and rip out everything else that's there except for the tree. I've offered to have the tree removed at my expense. I've offered to replace it with the tree at my expense, and have been told no. So what is my recourse? I've already fallen once because of the brown spiky balls that fall off the tree. And the city doesn't come and pick those up. The street sweeper comes once a week and maybe manages to pick up a quarter of what is dropped.
And with O'Callaghan, this is Chair by law, are you aware of the costs associated with that option?
Well, I know the quote that I got was $100 to remove the tree on the stump. And then another $1,500 to plant a tree. So almost had a cost to me of about $2,500. But I spoke to a very nice gentleman that works for the city of Santa Ana, Arturo. And he explained to me that I not only have to pay the city to remove the tree, but I have to pay for the cost of a mature tree and the cost to replace the tree and the labor it takes to replace it, which would be exorbitant, which I can't afford. So what are my options?
Madam Chair, this item is number four on the business calendar, so we'll discuss that. Now, staff has the opportunity to present the.
Okay.
The.
We'll move on to the business calendar and then get back to that item.
I believe we need to vote on the rest of the consent calendar items. So you can go to, moving to the consent calendar, items one, two, and three.
We've already voted.
Good then.
Yeah.
All three.
Yes.
So we can move to the business calendar.
Okay, there's my voting required for that.
One, no, the first three, four, five, and six. But actually, four, yes, there is a voting on the bylaws. And that's item number four.
Before we leave, I'd like to thank you for coming. Definitely in the discussion, it's outside of the.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks like item number four on our calendar is the Environmental and Transportation Advisory Committee changes to bylaws. And at this point, we only have a presentation for us.
In fact, this is the same presentation that we had last time we shared with the Commissioners. A notice, a seven-day notice of our intent to make changes to the bylaws. And that notice was sent to you over in September 6.
Sixteen.
Of sixteen for September of 2021. And unless you want me, I can go through the same presentation as before. But in a nutshell, what we're trying to do here is update our bylaws to reflect a change from us being a committee to us being a commission and some cleanup language to the bylaws that we shared with you in the last presentation. If you would like me to go through the presentation, I'm ready to do that. Otherwise, I would inevitably vote by the commission to approve.
Um, we did all receive that package in the mail, and it looks like we all have it. I hope we've had a chance to review it. Does anybody need that presentation to be re-shared?
This is Commissioner Benninger, the hard-energistic, I appreciate this meeting, you're all the best.
Can you make a motion, please?
We'd like to accept the gifts and I was.
Chair by law, second to the commission. Welcome to O. Don't know. Commissioner Benninger has made a motion to approve these changes to the bylaws. Chair by law has seconded that motion as presented. And if you would have taken a count of the votes, Commissioner Benninger.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner McLaughlin.
I say.
Vice Chair Jermaine.
Sir.
Chair by law.
Yes.
When you're abstaining or refusing for voting, are required to provide a reason as to why.
This is Janelle McLaughlin, and the reason is that the bylaws think that's an advisory position to the executive branch of color works, which therefore were involved as community volunteers and representation of our neighbors. And for me, the Chamber of Commerce is used as an advisory position. And the change to these bylaws makes our committee more than fire. So we have no advisory position, and we'll move to advisory position. So the next reason is going to be abstaining. The Chamber of Commerce is looking at this position to, on advice for having placed some of this one unit at the university. And no longer have that power and that's our sense.
We have four yes votes and one extension. Commissioner Wood is not present, and Commissioner Barra is not present. So we have, this motion does pass.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five, with staff, introduce the surplus properties agenda item. Again, please remember to state your name before speaking. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have Jason Gager, the principal city architect. The city engineer that will give the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jason Gabriel with the Public Works Agency, CIP Group. I'm here to speak regarding the city's surplus properties. So we've acquired a number of properties, as you're aware, along, mostly along the corridors, Bristol, Warner. And there are some other, other jazz tax acquisitions in miscellaneous locations throughout the city. These properties were acquired exclusively with grant funds. And because we acquired them with grant funds, these properties are restricted by those grants as far as what we can do with them. Normally, we must return a portion of the proceeds back to the granting agencies as required by the public agreement, so those granting agencies. Or in the other cases where maybe federal funds are used, we need to use the proceeds for a similar transportation use on ideally a similar court or a similar project. So one thing for behalf of you, properties cannot be held for extended periods, and the city must have this position planned to release the properties for sale. So I'm going to highlight some of those mechanisms that we use to dispose of or to sell properties. The first one is a state law, the California Surplus Lands Act. Under this law, you're required to declare the properties one of two different ways. One is a surplus land, and the other is exempt surplus land. Exempt surplus lands are usually with some of those details, but they're unusually sized, not only developed, but developable by itself. And so we need to get it in a different way. We also, as part of this process, make surplus lands available to both local and public entities, such as parks departments or other public agencies, for the streets, the like, as well as housing sponsors. So in this scenario, portable housing concerns are notified through a notice of dead ability for CCAs, where they are able to respond and express interest. Anybody that expresses interest, then we go into a good place negotiation period, where for ninety days, we negotiate with annual takers of the notice of dead ability. The intent there is to try to come to terms. Again, because these properties were acquired with guarantees, we need to be open to permanently value in the sale of these properties. We can't entertain long-term basis, same along those lines. We need to sell the properties. And in this scenario, where we got through the California Surplus Lands Act, we have been successful to this point. We have two properties that have been in sense of approval for this process.
I just want to make sure this is being recorded.
Right. Some of the other sales mechanisms, we go to the code for that information. One is sometimes I'll talk about exempt surplus properties, properties that are very small, can't do much with them on an individual basis. We would enter into direct negotiations with the city council, pardon, sorry, with the Jay Program to sell the properties, they cannot extend their property and taking over the maintenance and the use of that property. These are usually for very small sellers that, again, there's nothing else you can believe with. The primary method that we use is a request of proposals. And I'll do a little bit more detail in a moment, but basically, very many request proposals that are used to the public and they're able to bid on those properties. Another method that we used in the past is property exchange. And in the property exchange, it might be a piece of land that the city has interested in. One example is a property that was on the corner of, actually it was Benninger and Sander. There was a soccer field there that was kind of a community use, but it wasn't a park. And parks got involved and required that. So we ended up swapping another piece of property that we had with that property, so that we could acquire that piece of property. Now it's in the process of being developed into a park as a. Another example are an exception to the bidding process is the two-thirds vote of city council. We can enter direct negotiations with the sale of a property anytime. That is subject to the Surplus Lands Act, that process first. And the final method that we typically use very often is solicit a broker. We avoid this because a large portion of the fees go towards the sale on the brokerage for that transaction. Whereas in these other scenarios, we see with corporate agreement where, or a purchase and sale agreement, where we don't pay those admission fees. Also, as we were describing in our key process, where we have more control, in the case of the broker, we have less control. Well, ultimately, it's down on the site, so. So with direct negotiations, as I mentioned before, this is the exempt surplus properties or there's a there's a scenario where, you know, over a long range time, these properties are not developed because they're immense to the ground, they create life. They're too small and they're regularly shaped independently developed. Another example of exempt surplus land would be land that's less than 5,000 square feet, less than the minimum legal residential building lot size for Santa Ana or.
What size is that?
What size is the minimum?
Santa Ana lots.
Less than 5,000. So. And it has no record access, so it's a land lot piece property where there's no physical way to get to it from a public address. So those are some of the scenarios where we use direct negotiations. And we're likely to achieve a maximum value for this property. Normally, we don't get, you know, full grant stay on for the sites because they really only have utility to adjacent property. We successfully sold seven properties through this process. Recently, we have one suspended, and we still have three that are remaining that we would use this process. RFPs, so the city gets to select a buyer based on criteria that will return the highest social and economic value and conditions associated with this. We have successfully sold nine properties through this process. We have four that are pending, and we have seven remaining that we are continuing to release RFPs, just like everything else during COVID. Turning over real estate to developers who want to build commercial properties. Ultimately, our businesses have been a challenge, but ultimately, those seven remaining properties, we use this method. So as far as the RFP evaluation process, we've created a robust process of internal area agency team that needs to evaluate these. We have members of our planning and building, community development, finance, and public works agencies who participate in evaluation of the proposals we receive. Other proposals, they have scored on a, three metrics. One is the product team experience, proposed development concept, and financial capacity. We want to make sure that they're experienced in developing, especially in commercial sites. Their experienced developers and medical historians, that they have the capacity to do this. And we want to see what they're proposing to develop on the sets, so that we have some stability and ultimately look as well. The next criteria is the bid amounts and verification that they have the resources to pay them. So obviously, how much they pay is a big portion of our valuation. We also have a community benefit that is third-person of the scoring metric. And the intent there is to see what else they can leave us, above and beyond just building something on the site. We encourage them to give as many as possible on this and see what they can promote. So whether it's, you know, playground, whether it's, you know, small areas, green space that are inaccessible to users. A lot of times, they come back with, you know, how they're committed to local hires, things along those lines. So definitely, there's all value in providing that as well. And here's just a list of properties that we've sold. The surplus lands act process, we're looking at, considering a couple of properties over between second and fourth on the ground. Acquired this part of the web, we're out there. And then direct negotiation, we have the first, the first property, there's 1501, 1305. When we acquired a property related to the 7-Eleven, that's the southwest corner of Washington Universal. They lost some parking, and then we created a cold set at 12th Street. So we were able to sell some additional land. They recently purchased that property and actually extended the parking lot, made, upgraded their site, so. And then some properties on the south edge, South First Street, as well as a few properties on Route Bristol that is associated with the end-up expansion that we submitted on Bristol. And then through our fees, all these properties are residential properties that are either complete with construction, the new residential or in the process. The number in parentheses shows you how many new residential units were built as part of those, those sales. So. Ten total new residential units were implemented because of that. There's a number of still, like, twelve properties. Again, the challenge is COVID and getting a lot of it, so this has been a challenge, but we continue to release our fees to try to draw some interest in these properties. So what's not included here are some of the properties between Montague, Natural Warner, where we are still in the process of completing the right-of acquisition and regular certification for that front. The other area is north of INAT up to Washington. There are some big properties that are not available to sell or for distribution. So those will become available in future. And while we're waiting for the properties to sell, we have an obligation to make a payment, so. You know, a lot of times, there's, there's, you can see there's opportunities for legal underground. We don't want to see dust, we don't want to see tracking or dirt into the roadways. And we have your National Pollution Discharge Liberation System. And maintain the properties as best we can. We want to avoid encampments, we want to ensure that we mitigate this privately. We mitigate graffiti, and obviously, if there's any damage to the fencing, we want to be on top of that as much as possible. Our construction inspectors are typically out there, maintaining sites as far as identifying issues. But we need to refer to public, if they need assistance, we can use the my app for any of these issues, and we can stop them quickly.
Can you come back to the for sale properties?
Yes.
Absolutely. And with that, we'll move to our presentations.
Anybody have a motion on it?
Commissioner Benninger.
I was wondering, right, by the set of our piece, I just go to channel four, because those are.
So as I mentioned, if we use a grant to provide the property, any factor, a portion of it goes back to the grant agency. The rest stays within the project. Big example is Bristol, we're keeping it in that fund, the next phase is Bristol. It cannot really be done in fund because it's interfering by our issues.
Hi, Janelle McLaughlin. When I'm in Germany, straight there is by a wedge, that's all by OTC. Where I watch the flyback on fire, entering the, our town down in the river.
Okay.
So then it's OTC or it's a highway. Is my understanding that the city has a first rate refusal by a lot over.
This is adjacent to this kind of.
Standing lot over patches that the company has, or OTC has for sale. My understanding, the city have first rate refusal?
So similar to the process we have to go through, Commissioner Benninger, the surplus lands act. They would have to go through the surplus lands act and make that property first available to local public agencies and, and that is so small.
And that would be like.
That would be an opportunity for us.
Okay, so then again, across and by their contract, so your wedge, unquote, it, or on, going into our son, yeah, would it spend stuff?
It's a private property. I don't want to put it out there.
Oh, that's private property?
What are your.
No, it's not taking over this like part of my private. See, you're all bums here. I've got a head on myself that don't get to the district thing and get first of all, this, and I find my part of this.
Madam Chair, we are anxious to sell these properties and develop them. We're not sitting on them, but actively wanting to offer them and invite them to developers and improve on these empty lots. They are a lot of work for us to maintain vacant and such. So yet, you know, staff has been working really hard right now on coming with a program to keep and maintain even better with the fencing and the cleaning and the weed control. Coming with a program to keep and maintain even better with the fencing and the cleaning and the weed control and keep them locked, uh you know. Not available to encampments and such. It is a challenge for us, but uh we are. Looking for many ways to offload these properties and develop them, not only for our benefit, but also for the residents in there. We're looking at empty uh or parks or uh open space. We're looking at commercial, professional. Um and multi-use type or mixed-use type developments to come in and uh just uh instead of challenge, just like. Just Jason mentioned, the COVID has slowed us down with the surplus, uh California surplus. Land Act also slowed us down on offloading these properties, so going back in time, trying to just uh. Being what, you know, and the challenge for us too, as I mentioned by Jason, is for us to complete the expansion or the widening of the distance fee. We need to sell these properties so that money goes back into the project, so we can go forward with the risk of the expansion or the widening of the pistols. The project, now that's been a challenge, you know, council members have made notes of that and. Again, we're really actively hoping that we would. By the uh deadline, we wanted to sell as many as possible to give money to the project so we can go forward with.
Yeah, we have a lot of it. Open that speed, we really hope it goes down to the level of. For how far with land except in general.
Well, we we've done most of the work to acquire the properties, most what is left is the uh. The right location is the process that happens, make sure we. Rise across all that deals throughout that process. So what you see is if you find down there is is on the run of our.
Based on how it was gonna go, the expansion, you know, it's not going to last, we have to sell.
Um. So all these purple uh and uh. Left and. To watch it. Which should be consolidated to learn parcels to be to for uh one developer to develop.
Is this from the website?
This is not, this is how we track. Where we use these properties to contract a lot of times, so damn, they got hard and this is our way of.
Would that be good, well, on the website, did you see?
I I'm making a note to myself to put this presentation on the website.
Um, John Walker. But we saw then previously that we have um. A PowerPoint that they question, she has seen our point in their books on their. Thank you. I didn't see it. My answer.
Isn't it?
I I have it in mind, thank you.
Okay.
If you don't mind, it's it's.
It's the same.
So you should have this.
In this case. Yeah.
Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you.
So moving on to item six, uh would start introducing the bicycle, bicycle safety grant agenda item.
Yes, I would like to introduce the principal engineer, Zed Kukula, that would make a verbal presentation. And there is no word in this item, information, information. Zed?
Thank you. Give me everyone. I'm Zed Kukula, today's traffic engineer section, and I'm happy to be here. I just want to briefly share just a little bit of the information related to the grant we received. I think it's good that uh just to kind of share what we're doing. In case you guys have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer them. And what I want to start off by saying is in traffic safety, historically, it's a multi common before we should address it. Uh if you do it by itself, you need to do multiple things to address it and. These now typically will work for a bit of that weeks, one of the engineering, education, enforcement. And there's several of the fees out there, but I like time, I'm kind of old school, so I go back to the difference. But you don't want to talk about the education uh here, which is sort of the plans of that. So we received a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety. They provide grant funding. It provides uh given that opportunity so that we start as well as all the agencies. And especially in case it is a pedestrian bicyclist aid grants. It's for an amount of a hundred thousand dollars, which is great, uh because we had all these land laws to provide these education programs. So uh for this national, we're going to do is hire a consultant and back some of the other companies, a lot of the San Ana practice states. Which is great because we have the knowledge, so that's one of the benefits of my app is that to help some of the projects and help. So what I'm going to do is kind of like about basically the three main tasks associated with these grants. Uh the first one is primarily different type of presidential projects or community conducted. There's only about ten whole workshops, uh church community wise, these are grants that. We have to receive and complete within a longer time period, so for. Us as staff, it's pretty quick and uh it's sort of the fact that we have to bring so a pencil. And then just closing out handed it, it's quick, it's quick. So. We are going to house along Joe Ninety to prove the agreement. And I was saying, the first several, the first task are these different workshops that have been played by the San Antonio. These workshops are going to provide an immediate opportunity to learn basically rules of the world. Uh that everybody knows and the nice thing to do is uh we develop a type of access and stay with stuff there. So there are some patterns, for instance, our sharing right is a type of access in the stores. So we are bicyclists or pedestrians. It includes you to know that you got to look over your shoulder before you set up or shoot. That's in your own facility. So these programs are waiting on to act with uh throughout the the map, this. You know, map it off any next one, but the part of it I was start maybe. I'm guessing maybe not, because we have matches that's scheduled, but maybe January, maybe the summer. So these grants, like I said, uh the workshop will allow students to take. And help anyone learn the rules of the world. If you have some of the bridge patterns out there that have to be tackled with, that's what we want to show the technology. Uh one of the kind of workshops, in fact, is pretty cool, they advertise a franchise project. That's an opportunity where uh individuals actually like any of those lights. They go through the whole process of maintaining their fixing and repairing. And at the end of the program, that should keep the light and also make some of the uh things other guys like having in the safety, which is good to me. It's uh important because we're going to have a bicycle, we need to make sure that the light is safe. Here we're going to call it, I was using my car because it uh goes away, this is better. So. The the other feature which I found was pretty neat is we want to have, say, but I have a skateboard before I'm sailing. Well, they're on there too, and they're a part of the community. And we are going to be, could be a workshop, or a shape or a purchase, as I believe the first time doing this. So we are going to allow them, same thing, let somebody to look at it. Uh also how to basically assemble the skating off the target, and so I think that's really the vision for managers and executives of all of the skateboard. And we are going to also have a uh workshop that naturally. Certifies bicyclists to be re-certified instructors, and that's great because the more we have in our community, the better it is for all of us. Uh we certify instructors, I think, in the rules of the world, so the more individuals we have in our community that are able to follow rules. They can also help each other in a community that we close to in some situations. The second task that's going to be part of this uh wish program, which is actually this way, is we're going to have a general ten to try to meeting and there's participating. In a group where there will be uh a training, trying to figure out some of the things to look for in terms of pedestrian bicycle safety. And they are going to be basically our ears and eyes, um you know, to say that. To identify certain things that they consider are important or needed within our community. Uh I think that's important because these are things that we had learned from our community. We're proud of the employees, but when we have a community, all those things, it's super important to listen to them. And because they see that we help. As as part of that, everyone's view of collaborations and general of what we see, what we think needs to improve. We enjoy a second for actually showing them and have them present this information to us. And what I have actually prepared for is once they do that, that helps that is uh. Is that? Good. Hello? In there? All right, okay. So when we hear this information, we are ready to activate applying for grants, there are some potential to that analysis we asked. But if you receive information that is immediately based, completely driven, that is very important and it's a very strong grant application. And and we, you know, are part of a little bit of that, so I look forward to seeing this information after the community provides it to us. And sure, that grant applications based on the input. The the last thing that is part of this task, um the normal third task of this grant application, I'm sorry, this uh. Program is going to be encouraging activities. As you guys have seen, there's definitely more bicycles still to make certain in the city. And we've had a long range of it, but it's going to be good to make sure that everyone that's living in the north side of the city is in good safety. So far in the program, we're going to be finally starting the additional classes, which encourages and bridges family, individual families. To live together, to remember who doesn't know that is a memory, which I think is sad of this, um I wish to catch that and write it. The amount of land is pretty cool and it's been done before, but it's been successful, so we'll do it again. It's all loose as a sea, so that's a program where the uh. The city of a consultant will be helping out that night to the community to provide rights. To bicyclists, skateboarders, that are now the entities, obviously, rights of this really is important. So that's one of the things that will be done. Safety guys will be uh talking about as well, and you're hearing our comments appearing. The third thing that's going to be done is um. Public safety, there are sometimes they're called road bicyclists. And these situations of these riders, what they do is they get very much consideration, it could be like streets, crossings. And they have a lot of participants, typically children, to remember rules of the world and where is the environment. Um and I've indicated before, and things are absolutely valuable, and in fact, we have opportunities to manage to do this once again. So those are the different tasks that we're creating for this manifestation, but I would like to do next time we're starting, and so your features will be coming. Um so I could show the chairman of this commission and I'd be interested in how we have to come through these programs. So with that, I conclude my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, this is the backside of your support, Ryan White. One can actually um, they're especially in front of America five K bank. That section, what I still find, I'm finishing, I'm learning. And it seems to grow a lot, we're long, we're very successful. Doing this in that four packages, in another company. Also, we're trying to work as ourselves to include the five to twenty percent. We have an idea on how that can be used, there's loads of it used. Well, most of our resources are on construction, but um when the project is something to go with, we will be taking that, that's what comes to you all about the uh. We also have these events, not seeing the opening of Christmas, for the four weeks. Right down this this was the morning, you have a lot of ideas, you open students again, because you know, we did have some before and that we should buy this stuff, but I think that's something we should look into.
Remember, any fair permission or comment?
No, thanks.
Hi, Sarah, nice to meet you personally. I do work with San Ana at the streets and. A lot of you, a lot of what you mentioned is something worth studying about, especially the day for the workshop, there are a lot of speed learners in the city. And. I think not a lot of them have learned how to create their own speedboard. Let alone maybe own one, maybe a car, or maybe a town without some house, I think that's going to be a great workshop. Um, our new society events are specifically in areas in the city that have high portions and. You can look at the transportation engine mapping system or tents. You can create an account, search your city on the county, and it shows you a heat map of where those permissions are. So very interesting, you can search that. Um, other than that, I'm looking forward to meeting a few uh people, maybe there's a few more left to discuss.
Oh, two, absolutely.
Commissioner. Do I want it? So I would that have a. Um, in your presentation, I would have a hundred thousand dollars, um to consult it and refer them up a little fine or something.
If there's a whole amount, because I believe all the services and material as well.
So you're just giving it to the consultant to handle this event?
Correct.
This grant?
Yes.
So when they reach out to the community, does the city reach out or the consultant reach out?
They will get consulting.
So then what's like, is that consultant, is consultant of a local consultant or out of town consultant?
It's San Ana local nonprofit stats. So they really definitely know the city and.
What nonprofit?
It's San Ana active service. Right.
I don't have any questions. That's your journey.
Um, so with the uh. The because. Is there also um a match usually somewhere in San Antonio that you mentioned that? So what, you know, would that be um? Would that might since involved in some approvals or. Or direction as far as. Contract with with some networks, so. It's like a San Ana active service.
So so when, to answer the question quickly, there's no original action, so that's what I know is fancy. Uh but the way it's set up is when we apply for the grant, the scope of work has to be defined as from grant application. So when the grant is received, the scope of work will be already done, pretty probably. So once we go out and obtain it in September, we're going to do the work for the city, the scope of work is already done and approved by the office of the city, trust me, they change it. And they change it all the time until they feel comfortable with it, and with that unfortunate situation that has with this network. We don't have a full amount to give us, we need your scope. So we're more tight, our strength is a part of the norm, but they understand that maybe it is.
Sure, so I, so I decided to see uh we're receiving San Ana active streets to. Hear now the work with this brand, I'm looking forward to the result, I'm assuming there will be lots of data collected throughout this year to work, so. Hopefully, in a year, we can revisit it and put it on our calendar to just run it down for all the success of the program. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, for item seven, it is scheduled to be the repeat presentation that is an item that commissioner would request it, I think the move that we. Uh standard for the next meeting that he is asking, if he were going to be present for the next, is that?
So, appreciate the time, sir.
We want to.
I don't have any objections.
Any objections, I think, the items of the next February? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we move to item number eight. Thank you, this all the work for a variation with us. Thank you, this all the work we're in here, you see them with us, and we are going to have the presentation, well.
Thank you, I'm sort of amazed from State Maintenance Division, it will be. I believe, um, in general, officials, the item, uh, the statute for should have it there, that we, uh, we can presentations first. Um, this is related to the comment that we did earlier, and, uh, this is all. Um, the location is sixteen and one, and it's regarding the tree in City Parkway. Uh, it's the American Secretory, or Comerian, is the battery. The concern is that she stated in her initial letter, that we stated equal twenty twenty. Uh, she states in saying that she feels the trees disease, uh, with the, uh, directly, probably approach sidewalk. In some batches, and, uh, in fact, the comments that drops here, the circles, uh, is starting to see us. Since that time, uh, the city has, um, two, uh, two assessments, which also included damage, uh, the third were the same states. Uh, it's been on the condition of the tree. Current same conditions, also, uh, particular pictures, uh, the primary approach, uh, damage and the sidewalk drivers, the, uh, the, the tree, both have been in there since that time. Was shared in July, twenty twenty. This time, there's no, uh, of this, uh, sidewalk, or anything. He's on here, assessments, uh, created by, by the city, certified, uh, arborists, uh, the trees are true, uh, it's a proper condition. Uh, well, entered group system, uh, most signs of obvious, some investigation, no negative disease. Uh, it's, uh, it's true according to its, uh, and two year, uh, primitive, it was last from the, earlier this year, back in February. The recommended action, uh, based on our, our preordines and policy. To deny the request of any healthy tree, such as, such as this festival. And so the tree is not causing significant structural damage, nor is causing any danger or损害. But that said, there's an event that needs, uh, recognition to remove the tree. There are certain current costs that may be established for, and the, uh, commissioner, they probably will have to be responsible for that. It will be about seven thousand dollars, seven thousand or thirty.
Any other questions?
True.
Does the next one, Commissioner Vander, your question, Paul?
We have a question, uh, this office talked about, they had a tree removed, and they had to resell for three dollars. It's, uh, it's shouldn't, uh, not tree, and. I'm here about that, where, where, if they do a start of that post?
Well, the, um, based on our, I'm referring, going back to our preordines and tree policy, it was called, uh, it was part of the, uh, the Indian, uh, two thousand, in fact, March. City's recommendation was, uh, policy, we do not want to pay that for trees. And see. The process is, the problem, she's bringing this to appeal, she was having the, uh, seven mission, so therefore, we, we, for the E-TAC, uh, security service. Uh, at that point, including a different presentation that was against us. Finally, saying has to choose, and one is believing, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the purpose.
Commissioner, my concern is the tree plots, I think in general, it was, it's probably two plots, if that's what they're called. The user, gestures, type of skateboarders, and maybe somebody on a wheelchair, I don't know, I think those types of cases in the city, but maybe if, there's. Or how often they're regularly pruned up. Sidewalks are clear, a lot I have on skateboarding, on sidewalk, because of those type of laws. And that would be my concern to the resident, is for safety, she said she did call, so.
Correct, and, and we, we understand, just, uh, this is our law, I was going to process now. And streets, the streets are, uh, once, uh, the fact that this street is in City Parkway, uh, we can know that they're sitting properly. Uh, the means of, of parking, does it, uh, just fall as possible properly? So if it's a joint, we can say, and property owners, you can, uh, uh, to prove that, uh, that's part of the national process. Of this competition, this. And that's kind of here and there. This is a tree, uh, is in the room, so it's, it's not brought as much on here and.
Commissioner, Paul?
Um, a couple of things, I, I'd like to share that in, as of our commission, when we ask somebody in the audience, we usually move their items to the top, so that they do not have to wait. Through the whole meeting, and then have to put that forward as, well, probably to support our community, come out and speak more. So if they're not welcome here to our slip, so I'd like to make a motion that we do that, so that we're ready, ready, advocate, and comment to our, our neighbors. Next question is, my understanding of the platform goes to the city manager, not the executive, uh, public works. Uh, it has, uh, been proven, and it goes up to visiting insurance, and times, um, that she can ask a house, petition all the way up there.
There's an appeal fee to City Council, to the public, to the, to the office.
But there is that, the, the.
She can appeal to the City Council, but.
Right. Um, is that whole street sweet out?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, from the pictures, it doesn't look like her neighbors, she marks down, it's a sweet out.
Yeah. That's my question, so, you know, the, um, for me, Richard?
Sure, I should go, we just have enough to.
But there, in a sense, if you look at the picture on, except it sits at her home, that the one to the immediate right is not, uh, sweet out. Correct?
I, I don't understand, there are two.
She has a cinnamon on her street, and then if you take a look across the street, there is a diamond sweet, uh, across the street, there's some pictures that it's all around. So it's not actually losing the, the look of the street by removing that tree, and substituting another kind of tree, because that, that street already has another kind of tree on it, number one.
Correct.
Number two, from the pictures, if I steer, I mean, what we always think is that we can plant a tree right where the old tree is, but we can't. Because of all the ruining and, and everything else, so you have to move to the right or the left, but if you're planting a tree, it's gonna block your driveway. Because it's all around the corner, it's a driveway, in these pictures. So if you take, let's say, a request for a cinnamon, you're going to have to get closer to the driveway, correct, our firm?
The women, the, you were related to that statement, a way from the water, you know, of education to the driveway, so we tend.
Correct.
And because.
There's no room between a water box and her old tree, and a, a new tree, so discussing planting a new tree is, is invalid, because it's not an option. So then what it becomes is just removing the existing tree with no replant, and a tree.
It, it's a second issues, right, if the second issue is to add one, for a new tree, then.
That's what we're discussing, right, in the picture, if you can see, that there is no tree available. So the question is, of them, the ability to cut down that tree, not replant that tree with a value of, or anything else. So it is what cost here for cutting that tree, you're saying. The cost is six thousand dollars, so I, uh, remove that tree?
The six thousand is the value of tree.
Okay, the cost of removing the tree is five hundred dollars.
This is for the, uh, the price of a new tree, six hundred, or five hundred, price of the contract.
Right, so and, and offering her what the costs are, there is no plan of the tree. Unless you're requiring her to buy a tree, something like that, since Santa is out.
No, the, 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 there's just, uh, the British are responsible for the value of the tree, because the tree is free as, uh, as a city property asset. So the fact that we have to remove that tree, it, it's to, uh, the city to increase cost for all the kind of, uh, investment, uh, ownership, that's the, uh, the growth of that tree. If, there is one, uh, struggling for the, 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 there is a money, if you wanted to, uh, charge the cost of the tree, that's the true practice in the, for. If you just remove the tree, you would still have to pay some, the amount of the tree. The only excuse is the removal of that tree.
So she's looking at that tree removed, and, and paid the city five hundred dollars to do it, because therefore, she's not using her own person. Or her own company to, so that she's paying the city five hundred dollars to remove it.
Correct. But, but, it's not for the value of the tree, wow.
So, so you are correct, there is a, in a, E-TAC, and free would be, uh, the applicant would be granted a removal. The applicants, just like developments, are responsible for tree value, whether it's one tree or ten trees, or it's a thousand of the stock value, plus the removal. Now, the homeowner has the option of hiring their own contract company to remove the tree. But they will require to pay the proper company for permits, it was for committee process, and they still have to pay the value of the tree. So the value of the tree, at least, six thousand, six thousand dollars plus the removal fee, or it's a private contractor, or the same issue permit. Or sell, move the tree, plus the value. So it's at least six thousand. Whether a new tree in the future fits or not, that would be determined likely or not, based on the, the condition. There's a distance requirement from the driveway itself, I think, I think it's ten or fifteen feet, plus water meter boxes. So, and you have the previous root system in place, some of it still in the rain. So you really have a reduced capacity of that tree. You're, you really can't plant a tree typically, if, if you have a smaller, so, so. Those are the slight constraints, uh, you know, referencing, uh, the tree is out, it's an actually beautiful tree. I understand, residents and certain seed pods are dropped once a year. And they can be used, because this is fact, we also have irons at the, I think, another tree is, uh, across the border.
Cinnamon.
Correct, so it, it's a challenge, and it is, since all trees may possess simple leaves, right, so these are business at that time, so. Uh, understanding this, our position is to maintain our, and that's, we're, the military papers are serving for us, and, uh, so, uh. That's, that's our position, is, it is a city, and I say, we have to have, uh, trees. So, but if, in the advisory capacity of E-TAC, uh, the commission showed, so moves to improve the, um, so that's possibly.
We'll move to our commissioners, or, are you, you have our question? Oh, yes.
Before we move to the all prior.
So then the fact that E-TAC asks to waiver six thousand dollars?
Unfortunately, no, that's, that's a City Council proof, so we, we don't have the option to waive that fee. Um, that would be a different topic, just like any developed product, we can't waive that fee, this is only basically.
Okay.
It, it is in the list of these.
If you go in order, then go back, Commissioner.
You don't have to.
Oh, yeah, no, it's certainly, uh, it's, it's, it's. So, so, I want to, um, I want to, when, all the talks to, to the, was, was the commission to.
And, this, if I have a waiver, this is my one, uh, big, because that was a bit ironic, didn't it, maybe?
Maybe, maybe, I mean, it, it don't depend on, if you do a, a verification inside.
And now, uh, not making sure this, uh, finding the most rare root tree, you bring up the, uh, some. And then you have, you, you, you have, what was that?
Right, whatever is the city, the city of Congress, because that's any tree, we do, we do remove the stuff. But as I was mentioning, some of the roots, you know, so extensive, it's, it's impossible to, to pull on it. Or roots.
So I'll probably have to, uh, find the reason, look some.
Um, so, it's, it, it will also play on the side, we have to do the, uh, an investigation, but then you see, but based on, uh, our initial conditions. I don't think we'll be able to, we'll not call it that, very well.
Thank you.
Chairman, um, I just want to go back a little bit, um, and again, you've done it, but I, like, from record, to respect, what I'm going to just recap. Um, E-TAC is, in the, E-TAC, or E-TAC's responsibility is to review, recommend, with regard to removal, planting, replanting this position of other trees. What that means that the city can have free removal policy is to deny removal of any tree the city designated species was, and to make repairs to the park state. It's not like that's been done, to deny removal of any tree species that is not in, uh, of city standard, doesn't name its species list. And not causing significant infrastructure damage. I know it's hard to be accurate, um, to approve removal of any tree species that is not in the city standard, doesn't name its species name, and causing significant infrastructure damage, and to make repairs to the park state. It's not like that's been done. Uh, to remove a tree, instead of seize the under repair process to the public, it's not like that's a big, uh. Issue I mentioned with removal, that this shows that it is a healthy tree, and we'll go back to that. Uh, it's a case of notice on a tree, uh, that is approved to be removed, um, integrating appeals to this policy to the E-TAC commission, so we're here. Um. It's tough, right, because that is our policy. Uh, and if you, uh, Commissioner Lawton, for going over the cost, it's, uh, that addition, we can't plant it, that's taking three hundred dollars. Um, but with the health, uh, health of the tree, can we just get some fair revision on the tree policy settlement form? It does sign with the decay section, on both, uh, these sections, the second, um, February of twenty twenty, or twenty twenty one. Uh, it, this was done recently, uh, over six of the five twenty one, uh, there is the decay in the track, so.
Right, I'm sorry, just, uh, and, uh, right, towards our city records, we've got that issue?
Yes, and more specifically, we, because yes, it's a healthy trees, there's some decay, but what is the estimated remaining lifespan of that tree? And whether that is something you can factor into this decision?
The, thank you for the question, uh, that would be, uh, the, my understanding, based on the arborists and tree risk assessments, or risk assessments, that, in ways typical of trees, some have some, it's. In a matter of tree dying, it's easily. In a matter of tree dying, it's easy. And I think the karma of the mind, it's why, it's sometimes, but at this point, it's not. But the life cycle of this is interim, it could be twenty, forty, fifty years. But it's not, you know, it's not a danger of a fair, I mean, it's actually.
And so this is verified basis for, uh, uh, for any tree that, uh, with regards to the cost that at this point, if we were to hypothetically approve or remove it, so then we'd still be responsible for the seven thousand plus amounts of replanting of a new tree, is that correct?
Yeah, that's true, that is the value of, of the tree, the tree is in the state's asset. Just as I mentioned, uh, the, the current development project, the developer is responsible for paying the value of the trees, one with one or the other.
Are there any comments or questions for? Commissioner, Commissioner Lawton?
I'm just saying, I've been in here thirty years and bought the trees. This is a new picture, it's like, oh, beautiful, you should just come in and shave it down and put, uh, armor on it. We've got two cities meeting up sunwalk, it looks something fishers. It's much safer, much better than what. And it's just like they have that, this, that something that not everybody has when they have a tree that's unrooted like that. Can I be a safe precaution?
So at this point, we will, uh, vote to vote on, vote for this, or deny, how would we phrase the, or can I have a motion to to vote on whether or not to remove the tree? Um, who's to vote? Can I have a second please?
I'll second it.
That was Commissioner Andrew.
Right, so, very official, we'll share.
So at this point, I move to vote on, on, on voting, uh, the whether or not to remove the tree, so I guess would be, yes, we vote.
I'm going to go ahead and repeat the motion.
Aye.
So Comit, Chair Byung has made a motion to deny the property owner's appeal to remove the tree located at sixteen zero one Franzer. Commissioner Manager has seconded the motion to deny the property owner's appeal to remove the city tree. And now we're going to vote on that.
Right, so I guess would be, yes, we do not.
Can you just?
To keep the tree. Okay, vote, uh, for denial of the removal of the tree. Commissioner Manager, yes or no?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chair Jermaine?
No.
Chair O'Malley?
Yes.
We have three ayes, that's. We have two noes. We have two absences. So we have a yes to deny the removal of the tree. The motion has failed, we need four yes votes.
So please, I really can you have state level and extent offer, yes, I'll.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Yes, the current term of that's possible.
What do you mean?
Well, it follows whatever, or, which process is involved. It's, there's not enough, there's not a consensus, then the action is not legal. That's not interesting.
Mr. Commissioner Manager, I at least have the appeal now to the, uh, the, the, the.
You can, you can appeal the decision to continue.
So we can use this decision.
The fact that we have the motion there, the, the request is in terms of the appeal process, there is a fee for the appeal to the city council. Unfortunately, fortunately, there is. I don't, I'm certain the action failed, or the request fails based on the vote, if it didn't, you know, the term that carries is as good.
Based on the status of the election.
Obviously, I, I don't know at this point, but we have to look at this.
Yes, you have a case.
I, I don't have it, but there are cases.
Could be a cause of all.
We put this on the next agenda when there's more members present, so we can get it out here and go. And I'd like to add, Arturo, you have not nursed that tree, never watered it one time. The city's never watered that tree, all you have to do is trim it. And I would like to also point out, I've never, like, tripped over a bee. I have in fact tripped over these sprightly balls. And I've seen kids on my street flip their skateboards on them. They're a nuisance, they're a hazard. Until somebody gets hurt badly enough, that they sue the city, which I guess is what you all really want to have it, so we keep the jobs. Nothing good is going to come out of this. She's giving the thought.
Would you like us to re-identify the item?
And for clarification, I don't know if the, if naturally it's taken, I don't know, it can be.
Who knows? It, it could be brought this, invitation, which is a part of it.
If you wish to.
It has a couple. Go there, form a mission. I'm sorry? Explain that we have a form. You have a form?
Yes, you can proceed, or you can wait to, uh, to, to have a full commission.
Well, that's, um, chairman, as, as the position of the resident, let's add that to the next meeting, and we will vote again. If there's any problem with that, it's already. That's, no, that, that's it, that's fine, okay. It's awful if you're a real path, without a pass. Um, we can vote again at the next meeting.
Sure, I've got lots of vacation time to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can advise the item for next time.
When will the next meeting be?
Um, setting Tuesday of every month, so.
Every Tuesday. No, never, no. There will be Tuesday, November ninth, fourth, yeah.
That's awful, obviously, quite proud, you live last in the holder, it is approved, you are paid a payment, seven thousand plus.
Now, I'm going to appeal that as well.
I have another thousand dollars, just want to make sure you understand.
I can appeal to the city council, I can go to the mayor, I can go to the city manager, I can go to my council members, I can go to my state senate members. I can carry this all the way, I've got it all, all day.
Would you like to, then, uh, split it or appeal to the city council at, because I'd scale this commission, I can connect Stephanie to the city council. It's not like that anymore, for now.
I thought we were carrying this over.
Then, yeah, just deny yourself, have to go to the city council.
That's okay, I'll, I'll just keep going along with your agenda.
So, Madam Chair? So would you have comments or staff and commissioners, or are there any staff that are promised?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, I only have one comment, and I would like to invite you to a special pack unveiling ceremony. We are commemorating the completion of the Civic Center bike project on Wednesday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, at one P M, at the south corner of Civic Center Drive and Lacy Street. The project improvement consists of traffic safety for pedestrians and bicycles, and street purification for the entire community, including traffic circles, mini roundabouts, and ballbouts at the intersections of Metro Street, Lacy Street, Garfield Street, and Ponzieta Street. Now, the plaque is a, is a memory of Charlene Hansen, who was fatally struck by a car as she was crossing the street at this intersection. Charlene was a devoted and highly regarded community member, who, whose love was shared with the St. Anna neighborhoods. She served. I'd like to invite you at one o'clock on Wednesday, October twenty seventh, Academy for Fun, great to see you. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Any other comments?
That's it.
And you share all the orders while we're right here?
I appreciate being able to get back together. A lot happening in the city. We've hired a lot of time for all construction, in fact, I was late coming, coming down today, this construction on race. It's crazy up here. We have on the website a listing of work, structure, and convenience, and it's going to be.
I believe so, on the website, there is a map that you can click on, kind of in an active, like, you will find the, of course, on a location. It will give you a, give you a brief description of the project. And I believe that's something.
Which I break, because the next one is that, right now in my apartment, so we're doing a lot of slowing on the streets, and it seems random. Doesn't seem, uh, for half the street this time, a street over here next time. Doesn't seem all the other, the whole neighborhood is being done, is there an order to slowing is taking place?
Um, payment management system that the city has, it designate to us which streets need to be slowly sealed. And it may seem that we're doing patches, but we do it by neighborhoods and, uh, by, uh, sections of streets. I'm not sure if we have left a, a location where it should have been done, uh, if you have a specific location, let me know.
Down to Ryan Street, uh, Ryan Street, I don't know, it happened, the event was done, they happened in that one. And obviously, that commission would see, moving the story of those that be good. New York's the same, for my students, so. So kind of there's why we still have to sweep through the other half of them. Also, it seems good, and I need to say something, why do you have to service? It seems most proper than what it was. I don't know if that's been done, purpose, maybe more traction. But, uh, on the street, you're rich, you're a man, um, and over, I'm a veteran, so it's been, uh, family. This area is far more like the neighborhood before, and yet, you know, the Mexican, they can get a purpose, and it was just fracking on the street. So it involves all streets that have been rushed by.
No, I, I believe that we've elaborated overlay of all of our streets. Uh, as, as we improve on them, and I have plenty of pictures of that for you. If you send me the location, I can specifically take a look at this thing.
Okay. Now, since you got that last night, it's been a re-resolution passed by the city council. Uh, I think everything on this rule was necessary, but one in the second day, Mrs. Oliver, you can advance for a bit solar in the city, we're far back in the day. The school board took the other, the county, uh, you can advance installs for emptying the city.
We don't have immediate plans specifically for the civic center area here, but that's something that we would be looking at. Funding has been a challenge for us in terms of solar conversion, but we do have intent, or we used to have incentives for the residents and the commercial businesses to install that solar, not sure if these incentives still exist. Uh, but as for the city, we did actually do a, a study for the water department to grow solar and develop type of energy like hydropower and solar. And we, we do have a study, we have a plan, however, funding has been a challenge for us. Now, but, uh, we are looking at that and will continue to, to explore solar for the city business.
I second that, even as the water being to the city's system, and it's kind of a lot of our economy, but and it's why the schools, we have solar, both high school, high schools, most of the schools back. Every city, like six hundred, I'm running full budget bill, passenger, forty hours a month, it's solar that will tie. It's very efficient. But we have, so just either the top or that one version. And with that too, we see it's like, okay, being able to, my work is, my job is, I enjoy the hybrid concept. How, do we have any plans for our people for our street markets, full market, or higher?
Some didn't go well.
We're asking for me to get this vision, I was, pardon my inventory of what we have for market vehicles, full highway, the environment, and so.
If you push the microphone away just a little bit, so I think there's, yeah, I think the problem.
But really, there's a form of local market vehicles, and the city can do that with resolution, we now need to some fee levels, or we need to do something in that area, I need to, uh, police cars, which are part of a major vehicles in the city. In our board and Tesla, both developing police cars, we're all which save many, many, uh, of, of funds on. Um, and so that we have one thing out of each, John, the inventory, we have electric vehicles, and for hybrid vehicles, or the vans are in the future. And that means that the person going fully electric, for the, we know that. Do you have that, uh, that, 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 that?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Commissioner O'Malley?
Um, in regards to the tree removal, I, I do want to make another comment about that. I, I am concerned about destinies, and say words, but I don't think we should go removing literally trees. If, if it is sort of being regulated, um, or it's a case, I think that that matters and it's important. Um, you know, I do want to say it's also a privilege that she's able to come to this meeting and talk about tree, and allow people in the city have that privilege or knowledge on how to communicate about that concern. Um, and again, we could involve the opposite city and just keep the public tree, so I don't really want to talk about that. Um, and then in regards to the surplus properties, I understand that some of them do have the little little public entities, so I do hope that neighboring residents and, uh, community members are considered when choosing what to play in those lots, um, giving the right outreach to, to the neighbors, they'll be able to, I know that, um, developers and economic progress is of importance to the city, but I think considering that the community should be number one. Um, specifically reaching out to the guys, and the guys are bad because they, they could, they're not the premium match, and obtaining those lots for a new, the sewage are very important. Um, and then also, it's the huge, uh, you're talking about the bicycle safety ground. Um, we have a lot to work on this year for progressive, that's a safety in the city, um, Santa Ana has a lot of corridors that people use, but people just come through Santa Ana and they don't live here, they don't. It doesn't matter to them, so it is important, uh, to consider the environment and safety of our communities.
Mr. Lawton?
Thank you very much, um, I would really like to ask you, with your next agenda, to permit parking. I believe the city council events asked moment works due to a study on, um, permit parking. And, um, I think you are going to hire outside of the salt county. And if we become an organization or commission that's the body cert, it's nice to serve at the beginning of the branch instead of being, uh, given a part point of active decision as many and everything such as that. I think there is, um, a.
I think there is, um, a timing that William wants to do two, two permit parking studies. I'm not saying that one's all there, and the other one's pretty exciting. Is that correct, Barbara? And I don't remember as a public person that I ever heard yourself of those, um, studies. And those studies were discussed in public. Those studies were discussed, um, throughout, whereas. City Council. And this plan is about one eighth months ago?
Longer than that.
Okay, sorry, you're gonna have to pop, kind of, pause. But we have heard it came about, we have heard it from, from, from. So I would like to hear that, because the mall area is what is really, um, a commissioner, um, city council alone has. That's what is ruining this whole study you're being requested to do. And so I think we need to go back to the Congo Center and understand that, because, um, William was doing that report. So, no, we see, um, I think there is a gentleman there, um. This is. I mean, to Mr. Commission and the first amendment, and they're taking those votes, um, working with the base of every event transition. So if we can get that resolved with that study at that time. As well as the whole responsibility of the city council, putting up permit parking and this street. Okay, that's a good question. Um, I see you're.
What was the name of the other street, Mall there, and what was, we said?
East side.
Thank you.
Um, I think there was confusion about the voter too, because I think you're in voting, uh, and then, essentially, it's.
All you have is yes.
So we were.
Yes.
We were.
Four guesses?
Three guesses.
Three yeses.
Two no's. And who were the two no's? Oh, I read. Sorry.
Just to go back on the permit parking, we did a short presentation to the city council. What we will be doing is a review of our rules and regulations about the residential permit parking. And we're having a consultant to study our rules and regulations. And also, in the same time, survey other cities on what they've done to improve on the, uh, permit parking, improved situations, cities like, uh, Council Valley, Custom Set, and, uh, also the Anaheim. Uh, so the consultant will come back to us and recommendation of how to improve on our rules and regulations. Uh, we did a pilot study of parking on the northeast district. And that revealed the obvious, that there's not enough on-street parking. So with that information, we, uh, we have suspended studying other neighborhoods because the conclusion is going to be, there is no, why spend money on something we already know? Uh, there is not enough parking. So, the, our director from the C M and also the city council is to review our rules and regulations and see if we can, uh, make revisions to those rules and regulations and how the parking permit, the residential parking permit program is being managed or administered and suggest the changes to the rules that we have right now to make more space available to residents. It is a challenge, because, as we know, a single-family individual right now, the owner of a house is entitled in a permit parking, um, residential permit parking structure, allows three parking permits. You take one away and you will have a problem. So, and we try that in, uh, council member Lopez's situation. She knows that we move a sign and we got hundreds of emails in response to that sign. And that sign allowed for one additional parking to the public and took away one space from the house. And it did not go very well. Anyway, the plan is to study what we have right now, look what other cities have done, and come back and have community units come back to you and look for ways that we can improve on our, on our rules and regulations. And, uh, we will put it to our vote to the city council and see if they want to take adjustment or refinement of what the, the consultant and the residents will implement for changes. That's the plan. As I mentioned to council member, the study will take from eighteen to twenty four months.
Have you decided what company is joining us, consultants?
Not yet, we are drafting an R F D, a request for proposal, to go out and obtain consultants to do that process.
So we have to, some, check on consultants, or also.
Sorry.
And as for an update on that.
We will, we will give you an update.
There is a, like, update.
Just, sure, um. We may be able to come to you before we issue the P, the R F D, but even during the R F D process, we can still come back to you for information and advice. Tell us what you would like to say.
And we can see that R F D, or has that something?
Uh, sure, that, the R F, yeah, I can share it with you once, um.
Very good. Um, the next thing is, I'm annoyed, we were getting, uh, our execution chart of, of public work, and it was gonna be done right after we sent to us, and I have not seen it. That was, um, I'm sure, I'm remembering that, climbing that sprint app, and we discussed it at our meeting, and we were having that done.
We, we will provide you with a functional organization chart.
Um, this street contest, uh, the three streets that won, um, I think two of them are in floral park. And you know, the neighborhood association gave money, uh, to, to improve those streets. And I, I just don't think that's fair to the rest of the neighborhoods that don't have huge budgets in their, in their neighborhood association to allocate money um, to help clean up the street and for contests of the city. And in fact, that, I was almost thinking, um, the contests of three more important, three, um, in the streets. And of the, the E T A can, uh, they can have and voted, that folks vote. We was never back to E T A, but, you know, here are our three members of the commissioner and I voted. This is the result of that, um, this sign is this design, the sign we installed. Who approved that sign? Does the, um, neighborhood association have the power to approve? That we have four signs put in floral park? And what those four signs look like? But the, the fact is, and I go on record again, that you put, um, a visual, like, neighbor to neighbor, um, asking to clean up. And I know floral park didn't do that, they just stayed and, and prepared everything and, um, and so glad to have a look at that contest again, and perhaps recommend it's not a fair contest, purple park city. And, uh, every association, yes, thousands of developers did get and clean up the street. So, um, what we did, the result of that contest of what streets and everybody being aware of what streets.
I believe that we had, uh, three entries only, and all three qualified members of E T A as rated the three entries and agreed with the commendation and the award.
But though they came back to our commission and had it for a little bit notice that three entries were chosen and three entries are judged and greenlit, that they're an orange tree. Uh, and, and your worst apartment has no red tree. And do not remember that, in fact, coming back to commissioners total.
That, that was it, it was my decision to go forward with it once the commissioners approve the application and, uh, and, and make the award, recommend the award of the sign to be installed.
Okay, so my question is, how does the public know that a commission? Uh, it did not come through, uh, E T A here, that, that, that it was almost being done from the streets one, or how it was done?
We are going to have a, we, we're going to have an event where this award will happen on the twenty third, uh, which is the Saturday end.
Okay.
So we will have those three, um, streets, we are awarded the signs.
So that was seven, what, three months ago?
Yeah.
I'm just asking that we communicate that or come back to the commission or come back to our residents?
Okay, well, let's see, how do you want the commission to? Because the rules and regulations is we use the E T A to do the voting on, you know, the assumption that we would get more entries than three.
So then it comes back on the next week, uh, the next, after judging, uh, that merit under.
But it's already been voted on by the commissioners.
Right, and a report how then what, what's happened? Report how that there were three streets that, in terms of three streets that were chosen, the names of the streets, the walk, the streets are in. And that we're going to be in an event, and that, that just, just report how it actually ended. And or, or folks went and made the judgment, the rest of the mission or nothing.
Will, uh, will make just adjustment and will, uh, will report that.
Okay, and the next question is the next one, is that, um, while we get the next votes, whether it comes in a subject or, we don't see if it's a road repair. We don't see if it's an event, we don't know what it is. So we have to open our emails to the next one and recall us. Of work, it was a third measure to know what it is. So I think a lot of communications, they stand on the next one, and they just remove it. So is there any way that we can put road closure over stand and wrestle a little more so that somebody knows right away, I want to know about that? Um, that, that's, that's my suggestion for the next one.
Please.
Thank you, your recommendation, that's a very good challenge.
Commissioner.
Um. That's great to, uh.
Right here.
Um, yeah, it's great to, uh, be able to express. There's, it's always, uh, personal, it's, it's. Um, we have, uh, raising back, um. I'm, I'm also, um, concerned with, doesn't, this, this also for, for her concern with the issue of the tree. She did quite a strong, deeply, well, she, but, because no one had, um, cities. That's still, to, to put that, uh, size, size that, um, she don't, um, kind of, treat it out. It's not a, usually to a public. She, she touched on the song. It's, it's. So, um, with that, I'm, uh.
Yes, I'm sure everyone's, uh, same thing, I mean, I really, obviously, I feel bad, but it's not that there's a little room for that, um, so. I'd say, you know, she's willing to make that, but I don't know who would want to pay seven thousand dollars to remove the tree. Um, if that's a good sense, the problems still we have, who's a long time, have the full investigation in them? Does she have to be present, or just put it up the road again?
I don't believe she needs to be present, but I believe she's always.
I do not. Yeah.
She indicated shit. She should have, she, yeah, she indicated shit.
So, and let's say we've covered, and I, that was a separate session, um. Thank you for the presentation, Gary. Thank you for presenting, I'm happy to sit here, I'm answering all your questions. And, um, in regards to the story, there is a holiday session that also hasn't been repeated. It looks like the surrounding ones have, also maybe the location is not exact, um, but, uh. I think that is it.
They have one, they. I think, they're, they closed the stadium in early, your text. You have, since President of the family, the friend of mine, and standing out from this very room. I'm just reading, and wherever there was meeting, we will stay. It is not expected to the city, that it's fair to the city, and he really tried to send that for the question. So then, is that way, I'll close the stadium.
That is possible. Are you sure you want to start it? I'm ready to head there. Yeah, these are, list, I'm going to have, so they are adding to the list to address, um, Commissioner, or mail to prior question. Um, and if you have an priority to review the I O S, I want to make sure that we are the nation and the citizens, and that we have any recommendations that regards to transportation issues, create state issues, and general water, wastewater policies. Uh, please probably four secondations that to bring presentations, even if they're not really in our purview, or at least if they are, and excepting of it, presented to us. And obviously, there are removal plans to have in your expedition about to create, um, a lot of excuse. So with that, I move to a current meeting, um, at five forty seven, yeah.